Well, as much as I hate to interrupt congenial conversations, I will do that. It is seven o'clock, so I'm going to officially call the business meeting for the Kalamazoo City Commission from Monday, May 20th, 2024 to order. And our first order of business is roll call. Clerk Borling.
Commissioner Cooney.
President.
Commissioner Decker.
President.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Commissioner Pradel.
President.
Commissioner Wilson.
President.
Vice Mayor Hess.
President.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you, Clerk Borling. May I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Hoffman?
So moved.
Motion made by Vice Mayor Hess.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Decker. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay? Thank you. So for, we are honored tonight for our opening ceremony to have an invocation, which will be provided by Pastor Rachel Lombard from People's Church. And when she does come forward, I'll ask everyone in the chambers here to rise and then remain standing for the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Lombard.
Good evening, everyone. I invite you to still your minds and your hearts. I invite you to take a few smooth breaths. Sources of reason and radiance, sources of courage and compassion, we gather tonight to do the work of our city government. Tonight, we ask that you, holy sources, move through the minds, hearts, words, and actions of all gathered here, our elected leaders, city staff, members of our community. May our leaders be guided by their deepest values. May we remember that tonight's business is not abstract, but has the power to bring equity, justice, and joy to our city. May we remember that we are all called to love the part of the world we can reach and use our power to heal and not to hurt. May we act with wisdom and become love's hands, love's feet, and love's voice today and all days. May it be so, may we make it so. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again, Pastor Lombard. I appreciate you taking the time to do this with us. And welcome Commissioner Hoffman.
Yay!
Yay.
Can you say detours?
Oh, there's no detours in the city of Kalamazoo. Well, we are, we have three proclamations on our agenda this evening. And the first one is Period Poverty Awareness Week. And that proclamation will be read by Vice Mayor Jean Hess. And I will come down with the proclamation. I know there are folks here who are going to accept that. Please come forward now, and then you'll have an opportunity also to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. This proclamation is for Period Poverty Awareness Week, May 20th through 28th. Whereas, half the population will likely menstruate each month for decades of their lives. And whereas menstrual supplies are a necessity for each month for people who menstruate. And whereas, lack of menstrual supplies notice period poverty can adversely affect the health and well-being of menstruators and disproportionately impact Black and Latina women. And whereas, national studies report that two in five women and girls have struggled to purchase menstrual supplies due to lack of income, and more than one in three women and girls miss work or school as a result. And whereas, period poverty exacerbates the vicious cycle of poverty by forcing menstruators to withdraw from daily life, losing pay or missing educational opportunities. And whereas, period poverty is a public health and health equity issue, where, and addressing access to period products for all people can lead to improved health for women and economic opportunity for individuals and communities to thrive and reach their full potential. And whereas, local, state, and federal entities can take action to address period poverty and ensure equitable access to period products by providing products in institutions such as prisons and jails, including menstrual products in public health benefits and poverty programs, and making products available in public restrooms, public schools, and homeless shelters. And whereas, this week is designated to recognize the importance of addressing period poverty, to promote health equity across the city, and ensure the health and well-being of all people who menstruate, to thank organizations committed to resolving this fundamental issue in our state, and to encourage Kalamazoo residents to donate to period supply banks, product drives, and organizations that collect and distribute period products for those struggling with period poverty. Now therefore, on behalf of the 55th City Commission and David Anderson, Mayor of the City of Kalamazoo, we do hereby proclaim May 20th to 28th, 2024, as Period Poverty Awareness Week in Kalamazoo. Thank you, Sarah.
Thank you so much. I'm Sarah Kessler. I'm the Director of Care Collective of Southwest Michigan. And because it is Period Poverty Awareness Week, I thought you might want to know a few ways that you can get involved in supporting folks experiencing period poverty in Kalamazoo. Care Collective provides period products specifically for tweens, teens, and young adults in Kalamazoo. We have products available in all KPS schools, as well as multiple after-school programs, summer programs, and LGBTQ-focused nonprofit programs, so that we can reach the teens who are experiencing period poverty. And ways that you can get involved is we have weekly volunteer events open to the public. You can collect or donate period products. But most importantly this week, help us get the word out about the existence of period poverty itself. The only way that we're going to make this better is by more people talking about it, more people taking action, and reducing the stigma talking about periods themselves. So thank you for the opportunity to talk about periods here and start busting the stigma right now. Thanks.
Well, we are very honored this evening to have a judge in our chambers with us, Judge Williams. And that is, Judge Williams will be accepting a proclamation for her dear departed spouse, who was an extremely accomplished individual, and someone who didn't spend a lot of time advertising that. A very, very solid person in our community. And that, I will be coming down with the proclamation, and Commissioner Wilson will be reading the proclamation.
All right. Thanks, Mayor. Remembering Sid Williams Jr. on this day, May 20th, 2024. Whereas Sidney Bartholomew Williams Jr., Sid as he was finally known, was a remarkable man who rose from the depths of segregation to become a history-making college athlete, a distinguished patent attorney, a leader in professional and civic organizations, and a reverend, sorry, and a revered community member. And whereas his unwavering spirit and relentless determination to overcome adversity led him to apply to the University of Wisconsin, where he was given a combination athletic academic scholarship. In 1956, Sid was the first African American to be named starting quarterback in the Big Ten Conference for the University of Wisconsin Badgers. And whereas, after taking time to try out as a defensive football player with the New York Giants and a year in Canadian football, Sid enrolled at DePaul Law School, then transferred to George Washington University Law School at night while working as a patent examiner in the Department of Commerce. And whereas, after graduating with honors, Sid was hired by the Yelp John Company, where he spent his first summer studying to take three bar exams, Washington DC, Michigan, and Patent Law, to begin his career as a patent attorney in Kalamazoo. Sid provided a variety of services to the Kalamazoo community, including serving one term on the Kalamazoo County Commission, 30 years of service on the Board of Trustees of Borges Hospital, Allen Chapel AME Church, and Douglas Community Center, and Board of Directors of Comerica Bank, among others. And whereas Sid was also part of a group of African Americans who worked to make the Kalamazoo City Commission more diverse and successfully helped to elect Gil Bradley as Vice Mayor, Moses Walker as Commissioner, and Beverly Moore as the first African American mayor of the City of Kalamazoo. And whereas, he will be fondly remembered for his humility, grace, and unwavering dedication to uplifting others. Sid served as an inspiration to all who knew him, demonstrating that with hard work, resilience, and the steadfast belief in one's abilities, anything is possible. And whereas, through his leadership and unwavering commitment to service, Sid touched the lives of countless individuals, leaving an enduring legacy of compassion, integrity, and social responsibility. Now therefore, on behalf of the 55th City Commission and Mayor, and David Anderson, Mayor of the City of Kalamazoo, we do hereby celebrate the life of Sidney B. Williams Jr., who left this earth on May 5th, 2024. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, for this very kind recognition of my husband's service to humanity. We came to Kalamazoo quite expecting to be here for a short period and then move on to the big city. Fifty-six years later, we're still here. And in some respects, our arrival here was quite important in terms of the opportunities that we found available in this community. I think that one of the things that we have to recognize is there are some people who have opportunities and acquire a certain standing and then pull the ladder up behind them. That was never Sid's approach to his life, his profession, his voluntary activities. I like to note, for example, that when Sidney became a patent attorney and got involved in the American Intellectual Property Law Association and the American Bar Association, not only did he assume leadership as president of the National Inventors Hall of Fame, during which he encouraged the diversity of inductees into that organization, but the AIPLA established a law school scholarship to enhance the diversity of representation in the patent profession. And I have just been told that as of this year, 70 minority and women attorneys have benefited from the access to this $10,000 a year law school scholarship funded by other attorneys and corporations, because they too want to make sure that there is a diverse representation in a highly skilled and highly competitive legal profession. I understand that the proclamations of this sort are not lightly given. And so, on behalf of myself, my children, our extended family and friends, thank you very much for this proclamation.
Thank you again, Judge Williams. Good seeing you this evening. We have one more proclamation this evening. It is a proclamation supporting local autonomy for rent control policies. And that proclamation is going to be read by Commissioner Cooney and Vice Mayor Hess is going to come down with the proclamation to present it. So those that are here for this, please come forward.
Okay. Whereas, the mission of the Kalamazoo City Commission is to promote the economic, cultural, and physical welfare of Kalamazoo citizens and residents through the powers delegated to us by our city charter. And whereas, the population of Kalamazoo is 56.4%, about 41,000 renters, according to the 2022 U.S. Census American Community Survey. And whereas, the Michigan State Housing and Development Authority found that as of November 2019, 50% of Michigan rental households are cost overburdened, meaning renters were paying more than 30% of their income on housing alone, and quote, "may have difficulty affording necessities such as food, clothing, transportation, and medical care." And whereas, according to the 2024 rental data from Zillow and Rent Cafe, the median rent for a one-bedroom apartment in the City of Kalamazoo is $1,200 a month, meaning those making a minimum wage of $10.33 an hour must work over 100 hours a week to keep from becoming cost overburdened by rent. And whereas, according to the 2022 Kalamazoo County Housing Plan, more than 62%, about 25,000, of Kalamazoo renters are cost overburdened by rent. And whereas, the lack of affordable housing exacerbates poverty by preventing individuals from saving money for emergencies or necessities, which often results in physical and emotional distress and chronic health problems. And whereas, the lack of savings and disposable income among renters prevents them from building necessary financial credit and equity to purchase a home and build generational wealth, especially impacting racial and ethnic minorities who are often victims of generational poverty and pass it on as a result instead. And whereas, according to the Michigan Department of Education, in 2019, at least 1,396 children under the age of 18 attending Kalamazoo regional schools were living in conditions of extreme poverty and homelessness, a number which continues to rise annually. And whereas, according to United Way's 2023 report, 56% of Kalamazoo city residents live below the ALIS threshold, meaning more than half of the city's residents are considered the so-called working poor. And whereas, there is no current law established to regulate the rate at which property owners may raise their rental costs, and residents have reported recent rent hikes in excess of $600 a month. And whereas, Michigan Common Law 123.411 prohibits local governments from enacting any resolution or ordinance, quote, "that would have the effect of controlling the amount of rent charged for leasing private residential property." And as a result, Kalamazoo is currently unable to use its legislative power to ensure that there is adequate affordable housing for its residents. And whereas, in 35 years since the implementation of the state ban on rent stabilization, the state's median rent has increased more than 130%, while state median wages have increased 22% in the same time period. And whereas, the median cost of rent in Kalamazoo has risen from $824 in 2019 to $1,200 in 2024, a 45% increase in just five years. And whereas, rent control protects the safety and well-being of tenants, and is most successful when used in coordination with other renter protections and efforts to provide adequate and affordable housing for all. And whereas, multiple attempts by state legislators to remove the ban on rent control have failed due to a lack of broad and enthusiastic support from local municipalities, and that state representatives are calling on city and county governments to show support for lifting the state ban. Now therefore, on behalf of the 55th City Commission, David Anderson, Mayor of the City of Kalamazoo, we strongly urge members of the Housing Subcommittee and the Economic Development and Small Business Committee of the Michigan Legislature, the Michigan House of Representatives, the Michigan Senate, and the Governor to pass legislation such as House Bill 4947, as introduced by Representative Carrie Rangens in September 2023, to rescind the state preemption of rent control laws.
Yeah, absolutely.
to put for public comment here. Hello, everyone. My name is Tristan. Here today to celebrate the city's proclamation to restore local municipal rights for the adoption of rent control. My organizing mission for the last decade has been about connecting with the 25,000 people living in our city who are paying more than 50% of their monthly income on rent alone. I'd like to share some of our state's history with regard to the struggle for tenants' rights. In 1988, our state was facing economic catastrophe, and the average Michigan worker was dealing with deplorable conditions as a result of swiftly rising rents, union busting, dismal wages, and unemployment. At the time, working-class minority communities of Detroit passed our state's first-ever rent control ordinance to protect tenants from being taken advantage of by those who were using the crisis as an excuse to jack up the rent. In response, the state governor aligned with wealthy property developers and landlords and passed our nation's first rent control preemption. Even though the U.S. Supreme Court determined that rent control was protected by the U.S. Constitution in the 1960s, the preemption made it illegal statewide. By passing the ban, they placed the burden of our state's economic crisis onto the backs of the workers, who are already struggling to get by. In the 35 years since, the median rent has skyrocketed, while wealth disparity is worse now than it's been in a century. For recent context, since the pandemic started five years ago, Kalamazoo's average rent has risen by a staggering 45%. For 35 years, we have been told again and again, quote, "the market will find a solution." Time has revealed, however, that the market has no solution to offer for the thousands of people living paycheck to paycheck, one bad week away from being tossed into the street. Indeed, the market is only ever concerned with promoting private profit for a small percentage of people, regardless of how policy decisions impact the vast majority of the population. There comes a point where ordinary people can no longer shoulder the burden of our state's economic plight, and truth be told, we are far beyond that point. Tenants in our state need real change, and they need it now. This proclamation does not yet implement the systemic changes we need in order to provide truly just and accessible housing for all. It is merely a tool in our fight to convince state legislators to start prioritizing the needs and rights of the vast majority of people over the bottomless greed of the small few who benefit most from the status quo. I offer my sincerest thanks to the members of the City Commission for taking time to hear our personal stories, listening to our collective demands, and wielding what power you have to try to finally lift this terrible ban once and for all. We, the people of Kalamazoo, look forward to future collaboration with our other elected officials to create a world where each of us contributes what we can to the best of our abilities, and each of us has what we need in order to live our lives with freedom, dignity, health, and happiness. Thank you again for taking the time to meet with us and for showing your support for Kalamazoo renters here today. We won't soon forget it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone who came down to participate in the proclamations this evening. Next is the adoption of the formal agenda. Commissioners, is there any item that's on the consent agenda you would like to have moved to the regular agenda? See none. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to move an item from the consent agenda to the regular agenda? You can just tell us which one.
G2.
G2. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. G2 will be moved to the regular agenda. Now is the opportunity for public comments for our business meeting. Just a reminder, you can comment on any item. It's not an opportunity for dialogue, but it's an opportunity for you to express your concerns or thoughts to the commission. You'll have three minutes. Please state your name and whether you live in the city. Yes?
Hi, Mayor Anderson and City Commissioner. My name is David Elias. I have a couple of things I wanted to address. In the past, you probably remember, I was trying to promote the city from getting those scooters and bikes, which would help promote checking out local businesses. And, you know, it's helpful and it lets people discover other areas right around, and they don't have to get in their car and drive around. That's first. Secondly, I take pride in the fact that I purchased, I'm within a couple of blocks of the new arena where it's being built. And one of the things I noticed, and I know the police, I don't know if, I don't think it has anything to do with the police enforcing rules, but some of the homes are so dilapidated, I see vehicles out there that look like I see vehicles out there that look like they've been in a smash-up derby, and nothing's stopping them from driving around. I don't know if they no longer, if there's any type of vehicle inspection, or if the police maybe could just stop them when you see busted-out lights, bungee cords holding down a trunk, a hood, and it just, it doesn't look good, and they're also very dangerous. And I don't know if the City Commission could do something about that. But the enforcement of like homes where you see just abandoned properties that give the city a bad name and also affect the property values. So, and as for the individuals that just spoke pertaining to the rent, I know what it's like to struggle. I went through bankruptcy fighting for my daughter many years ago. But one of the things missing from the, what they're saying is that during COVID, there was a moratorium, I don't know if this was statewide with regard to the state of Michigan or federally, where getting evictions was nearly impossible. And yet the landlords still had to pay their rent. I mean, they had to pay their bills, their overhead. So, at the end, when all the COVID stuff was finished, and I, it's no disrespect to any of you, but they had to make up that money that they had to still pay their bills. And I saw it coming, that the rent was gonna skyrocket, and it has. And perhaps even very much disproportionately. So, in fact, I even contemplated renting out my house, but if I have somebody in there at some point, and it takes seven, eight months to go through the legal process to have them be removed, and in the meantime, who knows what could happen to the house? So, I think that might deter a lot of people from potentially renting out their property. So, I think those are some points of contention that the City Commission may want to at least look into. And I thank you all for your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hi, my name is Tina. I live on Lake Street in the known floodplain area. I live next to our last green space, Lake to Stockbridge, where your city storm drains flood out the streets and the whole neighborhood, backs up the storm sewers into the groundwater. We have standing water in the streets for days, which can't be healthy to be trapped in, for it has backup in it. We have already a high water table. We are also in the bow of Kalamazoo, the lowest point, as James Baker calls us. But yet you are still trying to take away our last natural green space, over a hundred trees, at least ten of them are twenty-four inches around, good, healthy, mature trees. Our green space has a huge natural watershed, wetlands, helps absorb the rain and the flooding. Trees drink a lot of water. It helps us with flooding. Trees also clean the air. We are in a severe climate change. We need to save green spaces and trees everywhere that we possibly can save them. I guess I just don't get it, why you would keep taking away all these natural spaces, especially in known floodplain areas. When at 322 Stockbridge, right across the street from our last natural green space, which our nat, the lots that you wanna build on is 209 Stockbridge, which is right across the street from the old DHS building, where you wanna put your Hawthorne project, in a floodplain, why can't it go at the old DHS building, 322 Stockbridge? And why do you keep trying to flood our homes out more? And another note, you have all these new, high-priced apartments downtown, all over the place. I think five new ones were built, that no one can afford, twelve hundred to fourteen hundred for a studio apartment downtown. That's ridiculous. I work sixty to sixty-five hours a week, and I still couldn't afford that. No wonder there are so many people homeless. No wonder there are so many people without homes or places to live. These landlords are just, they're getting rich over people struggling and trying to make it, and struggling hard trying to make it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Hello, my name is Chase Platy, and I'm a community advocate living in Kalamazoo. Thank you, Commissioners and Vice Mayor, for meeting with We the People over the past few months and for agreeing with us in support of House Bill 4947 for the restoration of local autonomy for rent control policies. This is an important first step in our fight for real affordable housing for people in Kalamazoo. There's still much work to be done, and we look forward to meeting with all of you again to discuss more local policies to address the housing crisis and to provide support and relief that our community desperately needs. Lifting the state ban on rent control will allow us to create rental pop, policies, prices that are actually fair and affordable for everyone, and that people can afford to live safely and comfortably. The current system of no cap limit on rent prices or rent hikes is literally forcing us out of our homes because we can't, and there's nowhere else to go, because Kalamazoo is at a ninety-seven percent unit occupancy rate. It is wrong that the current proposed projects are harming the community more than helping it, such as the Hawthorne Park development at 209 East Stockbridge, and it's going to harm the local community by destroying the last green space in this area and causing even more flooding and harm to residents and nature. This development must not be approved for the well-being of our hard-working, working-class community members who have lived here for decades and our whole lives, and are asking you to please think about these decisions you are making and the projects you are approving. It is time to stop leaving our community members who are in need behind. This includes all of us, especially those who need the most support, our homeless, our low-income working class, and single families and elderly. Elderly people and families and youth in our community alike are struggling to afford to live and rent anywhere in the city. We are being suffocated by rising rents priced out of our own homes and forced to live out of cars or on the streets, because the average rent in Kalamazoo is twelve hundred dollars a month, just to be criminalized and bulldozed by KDPS for simply putting up a tent and trying to have somewhere to sleep at night. This cannot be where the conversation ends, and this is only the beginning to the conversation that we will continue to have with all, with all of you Commissioners. We will continue to have conversations about these policies, to change the way our local system works, to give people relief and the right to an affordable place to live right now. Policies such as the right to renew, getting rid of unnecessary application fees, the right to an attorney, renters' rights can still be passed locally, such as homeless bills of rights and mandatory disclosure and renters' rights, and to prohibit the local, the source of income discrimination. It is not enough to simply rely on vouchers and so-called affordable housing, because vouchers is not enough, even with people are still getting out of apartments and rents.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Chris Flaw. I reside at 309 North Lauderdale, and I appreciate Kalamazoo. And I think this is a very noble idea, as far as controlling rents and to stop unnecessary rents. One of the things I love about Kalamazoo is how affordable it is. You have a very high standard of living for its affordability, which is actually why I'm opposed to this. And the reason, I just wanna stay on the record to being opposed to this, is because, as we can see in San Francisco, New York, and Illinois, I don't think those are affordable housing places that we would want to imitate. It did not work. And some of the reasons why it didn't work, and a matter of fact, it negatively impacted the very people it was trying to help, are for a few reasons, which I'll go further. One of them is that it discouraged new housing developing, development. And in discouraging new housing development, what we end up seeing is what we have right now, low supply or hi, or highs, low supply and high demand. Well, this, this trickles down, not just in someone that owns a property, homeownership, but it also trickles down to rents, or to rentals. So, it's harder to become a landlord when we have low inventory, and it's more expensive to purchase a property. This also hurts, number two. This persuades current housing providers to sell their investment, to sell their house. And we all could probably say, well, we'll say this, the majority of the landlords are small landlords. We're talking less than ten units, and they're self-management. These type of landlords have the best tenant experience that you can get. I fall into this bracket. Now, if you were to, if this was to come into pass, what we would see is the small landlords that give the best service to the tenants, they would end up selling, and who would then take up the inventory? Well, that would be the large housing conglomerates would come and take, snap up the inventory. And so, if the large housing conglomerates came and snapped up the inventory, do you think that would positively impact the residents of Kalamazoo? Has anyone here benefited or have a phenomenal experience from a large housing conglomerate? Been like, yeah, I had great customer service from them? Probably not. And so, I don't think it benefits the citizens of Kalamazoo to have more large housing conglomerates be invested in the everyday affairs of its citizens. And so, with that being said, I'm against it. I also have some questions on who would be the one to determine what, what the rent should be. And so, I just think it's more easily to, more than likely, you guys would have a committee. And I think it's probably easier to manipulate a committee of six or seven than it would be to manipulate three, four thousand landlords that exist in Kalamazoo. So, with that, I appreciate you guys.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Hello. Thank you so much for supporting this bill. It is very monumental, and I think the statistics speak for themselves, right? The ALIS statistics, when it was presented here, it was mentioned that no improvement had come. If not, the statistics were gonna be even worse, right? Because we don't have an eviction moratorium, there isn't anything that stops landlords from charging whatever they want. And this isn't about the smaller landlords or, or the conglomerates. This is about getting the people a seat at the table, right? A voice. Historically speaking, unionizing and people organizing has been beneficial for this country, right? When workers have rights, their, their conditions improve, and, and that is what the people are asking. We are just here as a voice for the people who are working two or three jobs just to be able to pay their rent, two or three jobs just to be able to eat, paying fifty percent of their rent. So, it isn't, the situation is not gonna change for anybody today. It really isn't. It, it's just a step of good faith from this commission to be able to hear the voices of the people who historically don't have a voice, who is Black, Brown, and Indigenous people, who have suffered the biggest loss in being able to build generational wealth, having rights, having to fight harder, right? For rights, having to fight harder for a seat at the table. And so, this is just a step of good faith, that we must continue this conversation so that we can find real balance. This isn't about just giving everything to the people right away, or just, you know, letting loose in the city. This is about addressing the systemic issues, right? What the AMI means, right? Sixty to eighty percent AMI is not, is not helping anybody, because zero to forty percent AMI is what we need to talk about. And that, those are, those are the people that need a seat at the table, right? When we talk about affordability, how much of those units are actually making an impact? I heard in this, in this, these chambers, being said that a lot of times, those eighty to sixty percent absorb that affordable housing. So, there's not much left for zero to forty percent, right? So, these are the things, the statistics that speak for themselves, right? The people need a seat at the table. And there is gonna be fear mongering from people who are used to taking people's work and, and benefiting from it, right? Because being a landlord is not a job. It's taking from the people, and it's not a fair, and of course, there's an exchange, right? There should be a balance. But there is no balance right now. They're taking fifty or more of people's wages, and that is exorbitant. We talk about not being able to afford food, not being able to accumulate wealth, not being able to pass, nothing down to their children, right? These are the things that are realistic for the community, and not for the wealthy who are scared, and not for the landlords who have, who have never considered the social conditions of the people of Kalamazoo, right? Because they just take their money and they, and they.
Thank, thank you very much. Yes, next, please.
Hi, my name is Sonja Espinoza. I think you guys should really take in consideration how hard it is for those that are renting, those that are unhoused. It's, it's real out here. It's, it's really real. I knew it before, but I didn't realize it until I had to go through it this last year and a half, having to move for the fourth time since February of last year. My rent went up four hundred and fifty dollars. I'm a single mother that works for KPS. My rent is thirteen fifty-four. How can I afford thirteen fifty-four? So, I let my case worker know that I, my rent went up thirteen fifty-four, so I was getting eighty-one dollars in food stamps, and now I get a hundred and eighteen dollars. What, what food am I supposed to buy? How am I supposed to take care of my son and my grandson, let alone myself? This is real. We're asking for help. It's crazy out here how high rent is. On top of paying rent, you have other bills that you have to pay. So, when you are getting help from the state, they don't take in consideration what you bring home or what other bills you pay besides rent, electricity, your cell phone, and they take a small percentage off what you, from what you gross. So, it's, it's not fair how things are calculated and how things are ran around in Kalamazoo. I really need you guys to stand up, because it's affecting our babies. Like me, being a grown adult, my mental health has been through the worst that it's been in a while, this past year and a half. Imagine what my son is going through. He just turned eight. My grandson is three. Imagine what our babies at school go through when they're homeless. They don't have a place to stay, and they have to come to school, and the only thing that's shoved down their throat is curriculum. I see this every single day. Our babies are suffering the worst. I'm a grown adult, and I can take it, but these babies don't deserve this. Please stand up and start making it where people can afford housing and rent and other bills and food. Like, it's 2024, nobody should be out here on the street. Nobody should be struggling. Nobody should be having to beg or ask others for food or things that they, their children need or their self need. Nobody should have to work two, three, or four jobs. I work for the school, one of the schools that are big in K, in Kalamazoo, and I bring home seven seventeen every two weeks. How am I supposed to pay my bills and take care of my kids? I work, and I still am about to be homeless. No reason why I should have to move the fourth time since last February. This is real issues. Please take this and do something with it, because even me telling my stories to a few of y'all who we have met, I still feel disappointed, like my story wasn't heard or something wasn't done. So, please, help us. Help us. Stand together with those orgs and help us and come up with a solution that's gonna help with housing.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name is Bruce Justin. I'm with the Kalamazoo Sunrise Rotary Club. We are sponsoring the Memorial Day ceremonies or activities next week. There are a lot of issues that our country faces, and there's lots of things that we have to deal with, but we are going to be celebrating lives in the spirit of those who died in service to our country. And so, I wanted to give a personal invitation to each of you to come and down. The ceremony is at eleven o'clock on Riverside Cemetery, the Veterans Memorial Site. And I also invite you to the, celebrate the parade that starts at ten o'clock in downtown Kalamazoo. So, hope to see you all there.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to make a comment during public comments? Seeing no one else, I just wanna thank everybody that took the time, made the effort to come down here to provide public comments for our business meeting this evening. I did accidentally skip over communications, but Manager Isma, you don't have any special communications, right?
No, I don't.
You don't? Okay. Next is our consent agenda, G. Manager Isma.
We have two items. First is the approval of a professional service agreement with Prine and Newhoff for construction engineering for the EPA non-copper service replacement project in the amount of one hundred and nine thousand dollars. Next is the approval and acceptance of a public infrastructure easement from Nineteen Props LLC in the amount of one thousand four hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Thank you, Manager Isma. I think that is the shortest consent agenda you have read in the last, yeah, maybe forever. We'll, we'll recognize this moment. It won't soon happen again, I don't think. So, Commissioners, requested action is a motion to approves item G one and G three, and authorize the city manager to sign all related documents on behalf of the city. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman.
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pradel. Kurt Burling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Decker.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman.
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess.
Yes.
Mayor Anderson. Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The items on the consent agenda are approved. Now we are down to H, the regular agenda. City Manager Risma.
Uh, first reading of an ordinance to amend Kalamazoo City Code, Chapter Two, Article Ten, Employee Retirement Systems, Section Two dash two forty-three.
Thank you very much, Manager Risma. Do you have any report on this particular item?
No, we don't, um, but we do have staff here that can answer any questions.
All right, Commissioners, any questions on this particular item? All right, seeing none, uh, is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this item? That's item H one. If so, please come to the podium, give us your name and whether you live in the city. Seeing no one, uh, Commissioners, the recommended action is a motion to offer the ordinance for first reading. Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Pradel. Any discussion, Commissioners? Commissioner Pradel?
I just wanted to share that I'm very, very glad that we're doing this. Um, I think it's the, uh, the right thing to do. I don't think, um, people who are serving our community, they have the luxury, like many of us, where they can somehow just not be serving, you know, at any moment. Uh, they could be a victim of an accident, and they're also always serving. So, um, I think this is the right move, and I'm, I'm pleased we're doing it.
Thank you, Commissioner Pradel. Commissioner Hoffman, did you have a comment? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Clerk Burling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioners. The motion passes. Next on the agenda is item H two, City Manager Risma.
Adoption of a resolution adopting the fiscal year 2025 Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund Project Plan for Drinking Water System Improvements and Designating James J. Baker, P.E., as the authorized project representative.
Thank you very much, Manager Risma. I see Director Baker is here. I presume he has a presentation for us.
He does have a presentation, and it's in front of you, and will be up on the screens.
Welcome, Director Baker. Good to see you.
Good evening. Uh, good evening, Your Honor. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor, uh, City Manager, uh, City Commissioners. Got a brief presentation here. So, uh, thank you very much. We're gonna, uh, talk about the Drinking Water State Revolving Loan Fund tonight. We give some background on, uh, what, what that is, um, as well as talk about some of their projects and then go into, uh, some of the cost. Uh, just some overall background. The, uh, Drinking Water State Revolving, uh, Fund, uh, which you'll hear me refer to as DWSRF, um, is a funding mechanism that the city, uh, can participate in. Uh, this is a competitive program, so we're competing against other water systems across the state of Michigan. Um, and this is a way for us to deliver much-needed water infrastructure projects at lower, uh, costs to our, uh, ratepayers. Uh, this, these projects, uh, this one project plan includes three projects. So these three projects are, uh, the Richland and Ross Township Water Main Extension Projects for, uh, forty-six million dollars. We've got the replacement of lead, uh, galvanized services within the city of Kalamazoo for thirteen million dollars. And we have a project to consolidate Station Five and Station Fourteen, um, as well as provide, uh, iron, manganese, and PFOS removal for fifty-one million dollars. So these projects, I did want to highlight, um, all three of these projects are included within our five-year CIP. So if you go back and you look at the 2024 budget, you'll see all these projects are in there. Uh, some of those costs have changed because we've got, um, updated, uh, cost estimates because we've gone further, um, down the road in terms of engineering. And we've got some more, uh, detail on the projects. And we also have, um, you know, in time, learned more about, uh, the market in terms of construction costs and things of that nature. Uh, so the, there is some updates, um, of, of those cost figures in comparison, uh, to our CIP. Um, just gonna kind of go through the projects now and, and show you some of those details. Uh, what you have in front of you here is a map of the project area for the proposed Richland and Ross Township Water Main Extensions. Uh, you see, kind of, uh, might be a little bit washed out, but there's a lake, uh, towards the right-hand side of the view there. That's, uh, um, portion of the, the southern portion of Gole Lake. Um, on the left side, uh, would be Richland Township. And then on the right side, where we've got the terrain features turned on, that represents Ross Township. So you see there's, uh, Water Main Extensions occurring on, um, CD Avenue, DE Avenue, East D Avenue, and, uh, M eighty-nine. There to go from, uh, where Water Main currently is in Richland Township, then extends over into Ross Township, and then loops back for, um, water quality. Um, and again, these projects are to support Richland and Ross Township as, uh, folks in, in those service areas experience contamination of residential wells uh, with respect to PFOS. Uh, this next, uh, project would be the City Kalamazoo Lead Service Line Replacement. And so, uh, what we're looking at for this project plan is the area shaded in blue, kind of an orange and yellow. That red shaded area is, has already been allocated to 2024. We'll be starting work in that red project area, um, this fall. So we're, we're looking at the, uh, blue, the yellow, and, um, the orange. And so those broadly represent, um, the, uh, Vine Neighborhood. And we've got kind of, uh, a portion of Bronson Boulevard and Westonage Hill. And then we also have Westonage Hill, Southwestonage, and Millwood Neighborhoods, all kind of combined in that yellow. Um, again, the red, that's, uh, already work will be happening there under our fiscal year 2024 project. Um, jumping right ahead here, this is, uh, an image, if you will, that would show the consolidated Station Five and Station Fourteen, uh, treatment plant that would be at the site of Station Five. Um, so that, uh, currently, Station Five sits right towards East Michigan Ave, um, kind of where, uh, Skipper's Lane comes in. So it's at the left side of your page. Um, and then you see all the new proposed area, uh, kind of north and, um, uh, east of where that our leaf compost facility is. So this is kind of, uh, what's involved. You can see kind of, uh, um, in terms of scale and scope of what that station would look like again from aerial view. This red line represents, um, a raw water line that would transmit water from Station Fourteen over to the consolidated Station, uh, Five and Fourteen Treatment Area. So the wells for Station Fourteen would remain, but then we would have this raw water pipeline that would, uh, pump, uh, the, the water over to Station, uh, the consolidated Station Five and Fourteen for treatment. Uh, this view is rotated, uh, so to your left is Spring Valley, uh, and that represents north. And to your right would be Station Five and, um, you know, the area around East Michigan. This is, uh, aerial view representing the, uh, red triangle represents Station Five, where it currently sits. And, uh, the blue triangle represents a, a broad location of where we know existing PFOS, uh, contamination is. This represents a Michigan Part Two oh one site that has known PFOS contamination above, um, already established, uh, public health criteria. So here's these, kind of a rundown of justification statements for either Station Five or Station Fourteen. Um, just kind of going through the list here, we've got Station Five. Uh, that was built in nineteen fourteen. Uh, that has been operated continuously now for a hundred and ten years. Uh, so it's, uh, well beyond its useful, uh, life and, and needs of replacement. We talked about that, um, location of the known PFOS contamination with respect to Station Five. So as we look to invest in Station Five in the future for us to utilize the full hydraulic range of that station, we want to make sure that we're protected against, uh, PFOS treatment. Uh, before we can, um, embark upon PFOS treatment, we first have to remove iron and manganese, uh, from the, the water uh, so that we don't, uh, foul the, the PFOS treatment system. Um, some similar justification statements for Station Fourteen. Uh, Station Fourteen is not as old as Station Five, uh, although it is, uh, pretty old. Uh, first one in operation in nineteen fifty-eight. Station Fourteen, um, exceeds the twenty twenty-nine EPA PFOS regulations that were just announced in, um, twenty twenty-four. So that, uh, uh, it would need treatment to be compliant in twenty twenty-nine. Um, and we also have, um, this kind of carried on to the next page. We have a consolidation plan, uh, that link could take you to that plan. Uh, broadly speaking, we have thirteen point-of-entry treatment stations. Uh, we're working through a plan with Eagle to consolidate and reduce that number of stations uh, so that we can better control the accuracy and precision of treatment that occurs at each one of our stations. This is a, a table, um, you know, I talked about Station Fourteen. I talked about how Station Fourteen, uh, currently would be above the 2029 standards for, uh, those new PFOS regulations that were enacted. So if we look at the, uh, second line from the top, that's PFOS, you see that, uh, currently, under Michigan law, the, the regulation is for sixteen parts per trillion. Um, the EPA has just recently announced, um, that the limit will be dropping to four point zero, enforceable beginning in twenty twenty-nine, uh, with the goal of zero. Um, the goal is not enforceable, but that's where, um, the EPA would like us to get. And our current annual, um, our current highest annual average for Station Fourteen is four point two. Um, so this information would, uh, provide some guidance, uh, future guidance for us that, uh, we would need treatment at Station Fourteen. Um, Station Fourteen does not currently have iron treatment available, and so we would have to employ iron and manganese removal before PFOS, uh, treatment could be, uh, realized. So given those results, given our consolidation plan, given our work that, uh, we're planning to do at Station Five, uh, we've, uh, felt that it would be, uh, the, the best alternative or the lowest net present value for us to, uh, perform all this treatment at one consolidated site. We did look at a scenario of having separate treatment at Station Fourteen, uh, separate from Station Five, each with their own treatment plants, and that was estimated at over sixty million dollars, I, I believe over sixty-two million dollars. I did want to make sure I mention that, um, Kalamazoo does not have high PFOS. We're not in any kind of exceedance of any PFOS limits. Uh, this is all about future planning. Um, our investment in this water system, our investment in these stations is really about the next generation and being compliant with future limits. So with the new EPA, uh, limits being announced in April of twenty twenty-four, um, and we see where the EPA goals are headed, we understand that, uh, treatment is gonna be needed. Um, and with this funding application, uh, we're making sure that we align our water system infra, infrastructure needs with all available funding opportunities. Getting into some details on, um, debt issuance and repayment. Again, we're, you know, a hundred and ten million dollar project as we combine all these individual projects. Um, if we had to pay that back at a two and a half percent interest rate over a twenty-year period, uh, we would be looking at, uh, something around twenty-six dollars, uh, per RU per quarter. Um, you could divide that number by three to, to understand what that would be from a monthly basis. Um, but, uh, it would be about twenty-six dollars, uh, per quarter. That is, if we did not receive, um, you know, any grant or principal forgiveness. So that's what I really wanted to highlight is that, um, the, you know, requested action to submit this, a project plan, is to seek those funding dollars. Um, we're not limited. If we are successful in this program, uh, we could also apply funding from other sources. Uh, so if there was, uh, say, a PFOS settlement, uh, that, uh, the city, um, could partake in, um, with the, uh, uh, folks that are the responsible parties, if you will, uh, that, that could also help to reduce those costs. And just, uh, real quick, um, this will be my last slide. So just kind of talking about next steps, the proposed action, you know, tonight is to, uh, adopt a resolution supporting that project plan that essentially becomes our, um, application for that funding assistance. Uh, we would know that determination by September, uh, whether or not we're funded, um, where we are ranked, and what sort of, um, of funding we receive for the project. And all the other items below that assume that we're funded and we move forward with the projects. Uh, I do want to note that construction completed date of October twenty twenty-seven is just one of the projects. Um, the, the Richland and Ross Township work, as well as the consolidated Station Five and Fourteen, would carry on through the end of twenty twenty-eight. Uh, so with that, Mayor, I'll turn it back over to you for, um, any questions, anybody, uh, any Commissioners may have.
Uh, thank you very much, Director Baker. I appreciate your very comprehensive explanation of, uh, our investments here. Questions from Commission for Director Baker? Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you, thank you, uh, Director Baker. Uh, when I think and I hear investment, my mind immediately thinks about how will this impact residents? So as we're looking at this investment, what are we, are we, in co, we coinciding? We thinking about, okay, the cost that is gonna, that our residents will be impacted by, are we looking at other mechanisms to help center that cost for our residents, right? Because like, we've had water increases exponentially over the last two and a half years. And so when I think about investment, my mind completely goes to the residents. So what are we doing? We, we can get these dollars, but what are we doing to secure other monies to help our families and individuals, specifically those that are low income and, um, in need of assistance?
So I'm just gonna advance the slides here to, um, bring us to this slide. It talks directly about some of those costs. So, um, you, you know, you bring up some, a very complex and, and difficult, uh, not only question, but, uh, you know, some, some real-world, uh, challenges for, for our citizens and our customer base. Um, it, I think the, the first thing to take knowledge and, and recognize is that, you know, with the new PFOS regulations, with the existing Michigan lead and copper rule, is that these projects aren't necessarily, um, in fact, they're, they're not at all, um, a, a want. Uh, these are needs. Um, we, we have to do this work. Uh, we've, we, as a system, we are required to be compliant with that new EPA regulation by twenty twenty-nine. Um, it takes about three years to build a station. It takes about a year to design a station. And, um, we're ideally placed right now on the pathway that we need to be on to be compliant, um, in twenty twenty-nine. Um, on lead and copper, we've made some great strides as, as the city of Kalamazoo, um, to be, to accelerate that, to, to remove that lead at a faster rate than what was required, um, under the two thousand eighteen Michigan lead and copper rule. Uh, we've had so, a lot of great help in that, a lot of great help from the community and ratepayers, as well as a lot of great help from, uh, philanthropic organizations such as the FFE Foundation, uh, for Excellence. Um, in all that great work has put us ahead of schedule. However, EPA has just passed a new lead and copper rule which requires communities to, uh, by this, uh, fall, by October twenty twenty-four, uh, to show everywhere that we have, uh, lead galvanized services in the ground, and then have that all completed by, in ten years. So under the Michigan rule, we were, uh, working on a pathway to get things done. Within twenty years, EPA has now come in and said ten years. So these are, uh, these water quality improvements are great for public health. They're great for our community, but they're not great for our pocketbooks. They're not great for our basic needs, uh, you know, that our community members have. So we certainly recognize that, those needs. Um, that's one of the reasons why we're up here in front of you tonight. I did mention these projects are all in our capital improvement plan. We could bond on the open market and complete these projects. That's within our bonding capability. Uh, we could do that work, and we could execute these projects. That would be a very impactful rate increase, which would negatively, very negatively impact our customers. So we're seeking, um, this grant opportunity, this funding opportunity to try to minimize that, um, and try to reduce that, those, um, those impacts to our, our customers. This program, um, is, aligns state and federal resources. Uh, so there's a few different ways, and we don't know yet. We won't know until September twenty twenty-four. Uh, we could receive principal forgiveness. So that's essentially, uh, an amount that, uh, doesn't have to be paid back. It's the same as a grant. It's just worded that way. Uh, there's also opportunity that we could receive state, um, ARP dollars, uh, for this project. That's a separate, um, pot of dollars that we're applying for with this process. Uh, this process also applies for the BIL, the Biden Infra- This process also applies for the BIL, the Biden Infrastructure Law, which helps communities such as Kalamazoo, who are disproportionately affected by incomes that, or communities that struggle and have struggled with a lot of these infrastructure burdens in the past. And we also, through this program, are eligible for any EPA dollars that are specifically directed towards PFOS projects. So through this application, we're kind of opening the door for all those funding opportunities to come to Kalamazoo so that we're not creating as much of a burden for our ratepayers as we otherwise would have. I do also want to point out that through 2023 and 2024, we have brought in over twenty-eight million dollars from projects, project applications such as this. So you see those projects happening throughout Kalamazoo right now. We're still working through our North Kalamazoo lead project. That work is happening in Westwood. We've also have work happening in the city as well. Lulu Martin, for example, are under construction. We've got all that work happening. We'll be moving to the Edison neighborhood this fall, so that's another great accomplishment. And, you know, through all this, you know, we're also continuing to look at water affordability. Folks can call right now to CAA for water affordability if they have any arrears. That's a program that's, that's up and running. It's also my knowledge that the city commission has pledged some dollars towards water affordability that we'll be working with the city manager's office and finding management services office to kind of create that program. There's legislation at the state level that's, hasn't been introduced yet, but, you know, is pending that the folks are working through on the, on the east side of the state, and that we continue to be advocates for, for water affordability. I'd also share with, you know, commissioners that these type of projects, a hundred-and-ten-million-dollar project, is something that we really ought to be talking about to our state legislators as well. We need to be making some noise in Lansing to make sure that we're bringing dollars back to Kalamazoo. In summary, we've got to do this work. This work is not only legally required of us, but it's important from a public health aspect. But to your points, Commissioner, I think we've got to continue to work hard and be resilient on bringing water affordability solutions back to our citizens. So thank you.
Thank you, Director Baker. You said a whole lot. And I just want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can do as a city and as a water department, that we, we know what we have to do. But in that same time, the heart of who we are as the city of Kalamazoo, that we pay attention to what our residents are able to contribute. And so are we really garnering those funds? Are we being creative in our thinking to say, how can we mitigate some of the costs? Like, when I think of a household that is low income, but are homeowners, and they're paying all these fees, I'm concerned when people don't have garbage service because they just can't afford it. If you don't, you can't afford garbage service, can you really afford to pay your water bill? Like, those are the things, like, I want us to, as a city and an institution, to make those things very real. And so as we're going for these dollars, excuse me, these dollars, can we, excuse me, can we all be, also be creative in how we approach humanity?
Thank you, Commissioner Hoffman. Commissioner Wilson.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Director Baker. On the back of Commissioner Hoffman's point, I was just curious that based off of the proposed timeline, when do you anticipate some of these rate increases to start taking effect? You know, just so we can kind of have a sense of how much time we have to, you know, mitigate some of those risks.
Yes, you know, thank you very much. This is certainly a great question. I think something folks are, you know, really looking at. You know, so one of the first things is, this is not a proposal to increase rates. We have a established process. We review and analyze rates once per year with the goal that we implement new rates on January first. So we'll be coming to the city commission in the fall with rate recommendations. When we left, left off last year, we recommended future rate increases that would be in the seven percent range. And we're not saying that's what the recommendation is today, but that's where our past recommendations were. I think certainly as Commissioner Hoffman addressed is that we've got a lot of homework to do between now and when we make those rate recommendations. There's a whole lot of alternatives here. This is the funding application. We could be very successful, and we could be absolutely not successful. So we could come back and not be ranked and not receive any funding at all. At that point, we will be going back to the drawing board. So it would be our goal to come back in September and see what sort of funding assistance we received on that. We've got, you know, a great management services director and CFO, Mr. Vissensi. He's always been, you know, really proactive in terms of project financing and able to bring in all sorts of resources to help us out in turning, including bond councils and some, some experts that deal with project financing. So, you know, to say that we're definitely going to look at, you know, every stone, there will be no stone left unturned when we come back with final recommendations, which would be in the fall for January first.
Thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Wilson. Were you finished, Commissioner Hoffman? Okay. Other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Pedal.
Director Baker, thanks for being here tonight and thanks for this presentation. It's a lot of cheddar we're talking about there, a hundred-and-ten-million dollars. And I know your team thinks very closely about that, and I appreciate, you know, you mentioned about the twenty-eight million dollars in grants over the last couple of years. That would be on the backs of us, the residents, if you weren't actively in our team, if the city isn't actively looking at that. And so I applaud you and likewise encourage you, please, for any opportunity we have to look for these grant opportunities and whatnot, please continue to do so. I know we have a lobbyist for the city now that potentially we could prioritize these sort of things to really do the advocacy work to the state. But we also have an opportunity through, you know, conversations, we could, we have residents, we can have telling stories about how it's impacting them adversely to make sure that people in Lansing and in Washington DC understand the impacts that this is having on residents. I had a question for you. In terms of this planning, so you mentioned, you know, for the state grants that we're going for, for this, that they're, that they're, they're low interest, but there's the possibility of principal forgiveness. How do you, how do you plan for that? I mean, because you don't know really what you're getting yourself into, if I'm understanding that correctly. So you, you may or may not get principal forgiveness. So, so do you know when you get notified in September then, that they're going to likely forgive a certain portion of it, or does that come later? How does that work?
So in September, when the intended use plan is published, we'll know where we stand at that point, and we'll be able to answer all those questions. So that intended use plan will present and outline whether or not we're ranked. So the first step is to be ranked. We have to be ranked to even get this as a loan. And then the next step is, within that ranking, where do we shake out for funding? It's not a linear curve and directly in relationship to your ranking number. So let's say there's a hundred communities, and there's enough money to support a hundred communities, and we're ninety-nine, doesn't mean that we're in the ninety-ninth place for funding, because BIL dollars, ARPA dollars, and principal forgiveness dollars for different project components are looked at differently.
Sure.
So there, you know, it's kind of, there, there is a lot of eggs in this basket, certainly. But the good news is there's more than one way to walk, more than one way to walk away as a winner. And that could be through a large portion of principal forgiveness. That could be a large portion of ARPA grant. That could be for a large portion of this is BIL, or any combination thereof. There's also some extended-term financing that, that could be very, very positive for the city. Things like forty-year loans could be something. We don't talk about it in this presentation, but that is one of the things that the CFO was looking into to see if that could reduce costs for us as well.
Yeah, I mean, I think in terms of looking at all the possibilities, bond financing is the least desirable. Well, I backed it up. Least desirable is raising that astronomical rate increase by quarter under residents because of, you know, bond financing being higher. We obviously would prefer to have as much principal forgiveness as possible, but better than having to finance it at, you know, current market rates, it would be much better to be in a situation where we get a very low financing rate from the state of Michigan. But dream scenario is we get a big portion of those forgiven. My worry is, is that because of the EPA new guide, the, I guess mandate, if you call it, or whatever, my concern with that is, is that we're not unique in, as a community of having major sources of PFOS throughout our communities. I mean, there are, I'm guessing probably hundreds of them or hundreds of sites around the state of Michigan. And I'd imagine that many other communities find themselves in this position of having no choice but to either respond because they have to now, or respond being wise like we are, doing so way ahead of time. So I guess like, just trying to get your thoughts about, like, it seems like this particular situation, it's going to be way more competitive than ordinary because of this new EPA guidance. Does that make sense?
It certainly does. There's, you know, a new hurdle was just announced, right? EPA has just come out with some very stringent MCLs that are enforceable by 2029, and some, some very challenging goals, goal zero. That's, that's where we are with lead, and that's where we're, we're going with PFOS. You know, you, you bring up a good point in terms of the competitive nature of this. It is very competitive, and it continues to be competitive, even when we look just at lead. You know, we've got a lot of communities in Michigan that, that have lead in the ground, and those communities are looking for alternatives to just paying for that replacement with rate dollars. So this is a, a potential for that. And the EPA just came in and lowered the bar, not twenty years to replace it, ten years to replace it. So I would imagine there's going to be more communities participating in something that we've been participating in for a number of years now, because the, the goalpost has been moved, right? And so now, a community perhaps that said, we've got time, you know, let's worry about this in the future, well, the future's here. And so one of the things that, you know, I'll leave you with a positive note in that one thing that may set us apart from others is that, as a community, we're extremely proactive. And when the EPA announced these new rules in April, who had a project plan ready to go for the June first submittal at City of Kalamazoo? I'm sure there's other communities that are as proactive as us, but I, I think we're probably among the top.
I'm sure many of them are scrambling, whereas we were ready, because we were going to do so anyway. So, yeah, no, I applaud you and your team for that foresight and, and planning. My other question, I guess, is just like a hypothetical. So I would imagine that other communities are going to find themselves, whether they were proactive or now scrambling and panicked because of these new changes. So say we submit this, these applications to the state for the grant, and then all of a sudden, you know, the federal government says, hey, we got to respond to this, we got to start sending some money, you know, send it down to local municipalities because we're just getting unprecedented pressure because of all these things that are being set. You know, what happens if all of a sudden there's these basically free federal dollars and we're tied into a state grant? You know, are there still opportunities where we could tap into those federal dollars or the state ARPA dollars, like you were mentioning, if those funding opportunities become available?
Correct. You know, I just want to clarify that this single funding application kind of opens the door for the conventional DWSRF funding via loan, principal forgiveness, state and federal ARP dollars, and Biden infrastructure loan.
Gotcha.
As well as any dollars that EPA put in specifically for this type of project.
Okay.
That being said, this funding application does not preclude us from going after any other funding source. And we also, there is a PFOS settlement, a class action PFOS settlement that has been announced. The city Kalamazoo has not participated in that yet. One of the reasons for that is we don't know today what our exposure is in terms of costs. So we're still finding that out, so to speak. You know, there, we have encumbered costs for PFOS since 2018. But as we look out on the horizon and we look towards the future, we can't draw a line to say, yeah, we're done, we've solved PFOS. You know, that continues to be a very outstanding issue for us. There's all the new rules for EPA that are just announced. April was not very long ago. This is yesterday in terms of regulations and how regulations move. But we, we haven't talked about wastewater yet. Certainly wastewater would likely see some sort of increased regulations. We haven't talked about, you know, contaminated sites, groundwater, that sort of thing. So some of these 201 sites or EPA superfund sites, are we going to have to go back and look at PFOS now? Including allied sites, that question remains open. So as a community, it's perhaps too early to tell where we're at in terms of overall PFOS costs, but we know we've got a deadline, 2029. We've got Station fourteen, as well as all, all of our other stations have got to be compliant with those new rules.
And just one last question as well. I noticed that quite a bit of water line that then has to get laid as part of these, I think it was Station fourteen and five. Is there any opportunity to kind of connect that to already existing or projects to try to save money in the future to lay those lines when we're already working on roadway or some other infrastructure project?
You know, certainly that, that could be. You know, right now, we're kind of just packaging the project altogether as one, as, as you see them, them outlined here. I think we really would start to dissect individual line items if we were not successful with this funding opportunity. We might come back to the table and say, okay, are there some things that we can check off the list with, with some local dollars and go back, you know, for, for the bigger application? Certainly that could be done, but it, it, it also can remain in the project. One thing that I did want to highlight is that that's not just a water main. We can't have any hydrants on it. We can't have any connections to it. It's a raw water pipeline. It delivers well water untreated then to a consolidated treatment plant. So it is a little unique in, in of itself, and, but would, you know, could be installed using similar methods, similar contractors to a lot of the, the work that's going on.
Thank you, Commissioner Pedal. Commissioner Decker.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Baker, for the presentation. So I was kind of reading over the DWSR project plan report, and when you talk about Station five was constructed in nineteen fourteen, that really tells you how old our infrastructure here is. And, and we're responsible for that infrastructure. I was kind of reading through here, too. We talk about our holding takes. You know, you've got one on Edgemore that was built in nineteen thirty-nine, Blakesley nineteen thirty-two, Parchment nineteen seventy-three, Mount Olivet nineteen fifty-five. This is old infrastructure. And I think this, what you're presenting us here today and what you have been in the past, also brings to light what I believe that we, the Fifty-Fifth Commission, could do, is really looking into creating an asset management policy. Because in what that's going to do, I believe, it's going to allow us to plan strategically for things like this, when Eagle says you have to have this done in five years and things like that. It's going to allow us to be one step ahead of the cost, and it's really going to allow us, as Commissioner Hoffman said, is get into that creative thinking of how can we do this now so where it's not so costly for our residents in the future? So I think one thing that I had, as I was kind of reading through the report a little bit here, is I wonder, you know, once this is done, and, you know, we have to be compliant with the state by 2029, what steps have you and your team put into place to kind of look more of some of the other water facilities that we have and see how we can bring all of those online together also? Because again, consolidating is going to be really the best way for some of our, our plants. And I looked at a few here, some are online, some are not, some are doing things, some are not. So I just wonder if you can talk a little bit more about what your plan and what your thoughts are with you and your team?
Certainly. And so certainly a great question. There's a lot of material available online that kind of goes into and dives into, you know, some of these deep dives that we're talking about. You know, we do have an asset management plan that was first established in 2017. There is a twenty-year CIP that kind of goes in, in step with that asset management plan. That asset management plan is updated via annual reports. That asset management plan is updated via annual reports, and you can go online and see some of our annual asset management plan updates. We've also got that 20-year CIP that, you know, it's a slow-moving target, but that's 20-year CIP feeds a five-year CIP. Some things that have changed significantly since 2017. If we go back to 2017, we weren't talking about PFOS. That was outside of a line item on a UCMR-5, or I believe UCMR-3 at the time. It was nothing that we were even focused on. So that's completely new for us. Something else that's been completely new for us since the adoption of our asset management plan was all the work in station automation and optimization that we would have to do as a requirement of our 2021 administrative consent order with Eagle. So there is a lot of work that's kind of tied into that administrative consent order. Two major things, well, there's several major milestones that came out of the ACO, but some of the ones that I'm going to highlight are the optimized corrosion control program, and that's something that we're in the process of implementing right now. Those contracts have been awarded, that work is underway. But also the consolidation plan, and one of the things that we looked at, in addition to the consolidation plan, was a completely new source. So we have a study that looked at a surface water treatment plant located on Lake Michigan, and then using Lake Michigan water and pumping that in via transmission main into City Kalamazoo, and then serving, you know, probably every community that wanted to get served along the way. That is a far-out plan that probably is not even attainable in terms of cost. We're talking a billion dollars for something like that. But what is attainable is to look at our 13 stations and consolidate those stations. We know that groundwater is going to continue to be a concern, but we know that the stations, in terms of optimized performance, accuracy, and precision, we need to run, instead of 13 individual stations, a smaller number of consolidated stations. So, you know, we're taking action and future plans to make Central one of those stations. So there'll be some future projects that will be coming out to identify improvements that we can make at Central. Again, Central already has that big footprint, it already has iron and manganese removal, so to go to the next steps of treatment are relatively low cost compared to something like this. We're also looking at the high-pressure district, which is kind of the outer ring of the City of Kalamazoo, West Side, and Millwood, and everything else. There's a lot of iron, water concerns, rusty water concerns in that area. Those stations, Stations 12, 9, 8, 39, all those stations have iron that is 1 to 1.3 milligrams per liter, which is about three to four times higher than what EPA recommends for aesthetic water quality. So we know we've got some challenges in iron in those districts. So we're future, looking probably towards a consolidated treatment plant that's going to be able to handle the load from seven, excuse me, from Station 8, 9, 39, 12. And also within those districts, we shut down and decommissioned Stations 17 and 18. Those are the ones that were right in Millwood in the park there. Those have been taken out of service. They were taken out of service years ago due to elevated PFOS concerns. And so we haven't restored that hydraulic capacity yet. That's something that we're going to need to here in the future. And so that's kind of the next area that we'll be looking to consolidate, as well as consolidating stations around Central. But those would be future projects. And again, with a water utility, this is a large water utility, 850 miles of main, we serve over 196,000 customers. And if we look at the investment strategies over the years, there's a tremendous amount of investment in the 1930s. Tremendous amount of that investment was paid for by the WPA, the Works Progress Administration. The Edgemore tank, built 1939, Station 6, built in 1939, tremendous amount of transmission main, and the first creation of what we now have as a multi-pressure district system was all created during the Works Progress Administration in the 1930s. So that was a lot of great work for the city, that was a great investment in the City of Kalamazoo. But as the years went on, a lot of our investment was focused on growth. And, you know, growth is certainly needed by utility, that's one of the fundamental pieces of a utility. But infrastructure replacement also has to be part of that. And so we're kind of in a natural cycle, if you will, where 1939 is kind of a long time ago now for us, and it's time to reinvest in a lot of that infrastructure.
Thank you for that, and I definitely agree, again, within the investment in the infrastructure, because as we grow, as new units of businesses and homes also come online, we're going to have to have the facility that's going to be able to deliver the services that our residents need. So, thank you, thank you for that.
Thank you, Commissioner Decker. Commissioner Cooney?
Thank you, Mayor. You're doing a great job. You're doing, there's two things here. One is, we have to have clean water. We have to have clean water, and you're on top of that. And second principle here is, everybody deserves access to clean water. I lived in a country where they didn't have access to clean water. And only in the capital where I lived, we would every night take the tap water and boil it, and then put it in bottles and carry it around the next day, just so we would have something to drink. This is the richest country in the history of the world. We don't want to have people boiling water and, come on, we're better than that. So you're doing your part. You're looking for every bit of grant that we can get to put it there. I think we have to ask some questions. Where does PFOS come from? Did this come from big businesses? What is their responsibility in cleaning up the pollution? Why do they do this, and then they say, oh, man, you guys better clean that up? No. Federal government's got to stop in there and make them pay. That's number one. Number two, government intervention with the New Deal that built these things, that made sure, that's got to happen again. Now, we're not, we're not the federal government, but by God, we got to advocate with the federal government and make sure that this happens. We've got an election coming up, and we cannot let them distract us and say, you know, yeah, it's pretty expensive. This is not a free market thing. This is something that people deserve. So it's not just on you. We got to look at it different way. We can't say, this is option here, only the people that can pay for it are going to have clean water. No, we're not going to do that. We've got to find a way to do that. And I know you're doing everything you can to do that. We've got to join with other cities and demand that those people who polluted, clean it up, and secondly, that the federal government makes access to clean water part of it. We're spending a trillion dollars a year on the military, more than the next 16 countries in the world combined. We should spend some of that on clean water for our people.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooney. Vice Mayor Hess?
Agreed. So most of my questions have been answered by my fellow commissioners, but I have an observation, that not everything constructed in 1958 needs replacement and is old. Just saying. Just saying. Regarding the PFOS, so I'm reading in here, and I see PFOS, and I thought it was PFAS. Can you help me, in layman's terms, understand the difference between OS and AS? And is it all, I know it's all bad, and it's not, it's not good for our health, so can you help me understand that?
Sure. So, you know, a lot of this is just nomenclature in how we refer to it, and not to say that, you know, I am certainly not the expert in this, so I'll acknowledge that right away. Generally, you'll see us refer to PFOS, PFAS, as the perfluoralkali substances, which includes, for the sake of our conversation, PFOA, PFOS, PFHXS, PFNA, PFHXA, PFBS, and then a HFPO/DA, which is the Gen X. So essentially, PFOS is all of them, PFAS is all of them, and then PFOS is a specific family. That being said, I think there's something like over 14,000 of these individual compounds. So we could go, this list could go on for several more hours if we wanted it to, but the EPA and Eagle, State of Michigan Environment, Great Lakes Energy, has really focused on, for Michigan, these seven compounds. And so those are the ones that are most likely to create adverse health impacts for populations.
Thank you for that. And you said it earlier in your, in your report, but people are currently at or below, we are currently at or below the level of exposure to PFOS in our drinking water system.
That's correct. We are currently fully compliant with all Michigan, State of Michigan, MCLs, maximum contaminant levels. For the PFOS, PFOS that I referenced, the Michigan limit is 16. We are currently at 4.2 with our highest annual average, so we are about four times below the limit. But as the EPA, the EPA announced it, but through 2029 is when the date that we have to be compliant by. So we're compliant with everything today, but as the EPA kind of lowers that threshold, and it's been announced, it's here in black and white, we know what it is, then we'll have to be compliant with that. I did also want to point out that with these low numbers, you know, these single-digit numbers, there, we're not really looking at with, like Station 14, for example, something that was caused from one point source, you know, was, there was not like a gas station or a dry cleaners or something there that caused this. There's not a plume, per se. This amount is indicative of background. This is something that is part of our urban experience in our modern life. The PFOS chemicals were invented in, some as far back as the 1940s, and so they're part of our everyday life. It's in makeup, it's in cosmetics, it's in soaps and things that we use in our body every day. It's in a lot of our foods, it's in a lot of fast food packaging, it's in, it's in a lot of products that we use and consume and have in our daily lives. And in an urban environment, there's more of us per square mile or per acre, and so those levels tend to build up. I'm sure you've heard the term forever chemicals. These chemicals don't break down easily, and it's going to take some very specialized treatment to, you know, to treat them properly.
Thank you for that. So I think I see some education in our future. I would hope that we bring these things forward. What products are we using that are continuing to cause these things here? And perhaps we could look on the pre, the proactive use of it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Hess. Any other questions from commissioners at this time? So, thank you, very comprehensive set of questions, I appreciate that, and always great answers, you're entirely prepared, Director Baker. I would just like to suggest that even though it may not seem like it, you know, we just did a light dive into this topic tonight. If you are interested in a more thorough investigation or discussion about this, and particularly, Commissioner Decker, as it comes to an asset management plan, and, which obviously is the capital improvement plan, over 20 years at least, there is a public committee that we are part of, you know, the Utility Policy Committee, which has public meetings and talks about all this and looks at it. We have a, an amazing extended asset management plan in place for this infrastructure, which is discussed, and I can say that not only is it very comprehensive, I happen to be our rep sitting on that committee, but it's frightening, to tell you the truth, because what we're talking about is investment over the course of time. And so those get to be big, big numbers when you add them all up. I couldn't agree with you more, Commissioner Cooney. Yeah, I mean, it is profoundly enlightening when you look at some of these dates and realize that this work happened during the worst depression we've ever had in this country, New Deal work. And it's not a brand-new idea to think about, when things like this are so needed and occur, the idea of a current New Deal-type, WPA-type program that is going to invest in these kinds of things across the country. I don't care if you're talking about Jackson, Mississippi, or you're talking about all the, what we're witnessing in terms of our struggling to afford this infrastructure, which, guess what? During the '30s, that was not all supported by local revenue alone. It's got to be, got to be an answer to that. I think it's unfortunate, that's probably be like number 500 on the list, what things, when people talk about during this particular cycle. I don't know, I think we'll be, unfortunately, probably just calling each other names for the most part, but, you know, somewhere or another, inserting actually important questions about policy and investment are really going to make a difference. But that will help us with that long, that big, big number, Commissioner Decker, that we look at. And something else I just want to suggest that has not been our radar, and that is this, you know, we watch out in California, where they're talking about, you know, very intense programs to save water and to limit use. And that's because water shortages have been there. But, you know, we do live in a water wonderland, but now we are realizing that water use does drive bills, if nothing else. But we got a lot of water around, we'd be able to, you know, be kind of a cavalier about our use of it, but there's going to be a direct effect for every one of us in terms of whether it's people that use irrigation systems, whether it is that idea of kind of ignoring even that drip, drip, drip you might have in a faucet, or sometimes your toilet runs, it's astounding what that can do to your bill. And I think something none of us look at when that water bill comes in is, what is my actual usage here? How many gallons of water went through my system, which result exactly in the cost of what I'm paying? And I know that we're, right now, you don't get feedback on that for three months. So that's just, I think we're going to have to continue to make sure that we are, and you've already basically have programs related to this, but really helping people understand that connection between water use and the bill you're going to see once a quarter for most people in the system. So thank you once again for all your efforts on this, and I really appreciate it. Seeing no questions from the commission, now is the opportunity for everybody here in the chambers to comment on this item. If you have a comment for item H2, please come forward at this time. Seeing no one, the recommended action, commissioners' motion to adopt the resolution, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Hoffman?
Support.
Supported by Commissioner Cooney. Any further discussion, team? All right, seeing none, Clerk Barling, please call a roll.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, the motion passes, and now we have one more item on our regular agenda, and a jurisma.
Approval of an agreement with Western Michigan University to conduct a multi-year study of the economic vitality of downtown Kalamazoo for the amount of $115,000.
Thank you very much. I'll tell you what, if it's on the consent agenda and you didn't have a presentation planned, comment on this item, now that it's on the regular agenda, please come forward.
Yes, thank you. I just want to make a note that in 2022, there was already a downtown study. I know it was maybe something different. It's really hard for community members to keep up with presentations. Sometimes we have a lot of community volunteer work to do, so I did not catch this presentation. But I just want to make an important note about the consequences of the Notre Dame study when it comes to homelessness. And it was said in this, in these chambers by Jane Goodall, I believe. She said that the homeless situation downtown conflates directly with the vitality of downtown. So the homeless situation deters people from coming to the train station, right? And all of these, like, I don't know, like, gentrification, to me, it's like gentrification attempts, because the last study did not address, even though the study did- attempts, because the last study did not address, even though the study did address that the homeless community depended on Arcadia Park, even then, the community was pushed out, right? So I want to make a note to be careful with these kinds of studies and how they propel gentrification. There's no, no measures in place for homeless people downtown. As a matter of fact, they're getting criminalized daily, $200, $300 fines. This is one of three cities in Michigan that criminalizes homelessness, which is a constitutional, it's protected right to eat, sleep, and do basic needs where people need to do if they do not have a home. And so I'm worried that this study is going to impact, negatively impact the houses community downtown that is already pushed into, you can see them on Kalamazoo Avenue, all those residents on Kalamazoo Avenue, they were dependent on Arcadia Park. And so I want you all to consider the greater implications, the greater social implications that this study will have on the houses community if there is no, nothing in place for the community. That's my concern, right? Because as it said in the last report, and I was going to bring it up, but, you know, it noted, it noted the houses community, and nothing was done. And so I want you all to consider that the $115,000 could be used for ISK, who is running out of money, right, as was noted at the Housing, Public Housing Commission. I think there's bigger, bigger emergencies that need to be addressed. ISK is a huge organization. HARA, the HARA money is ending, families who had services because they had kids in public, in KPS schools are no longer going to have a home. That's the risk. They went and they begged at the Public Housing Commission meeting before you for more funding. So people, so families would not go homeless. So I, I beg you to look at the implications of-
Without the, without the, without the threefold, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wanted to comment on this particular item? This is now a regular agenda item, H3. I don't see anyone, thank you so much. I would like, is there a short description you could provide for us about what this study is, is-
Yeah, Assistant-
-attempting to address?
Assistant City Manager Rebecca Kick can provide that.
Welcome. Yes, Assistant City Manager Kick, appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. Yes, I would like to provide just a quick description of what this is. Western Michigan University is helping us, along with Southwest Michigan First and the Chamber and Economic Development staff at the city, want to understand the impacts of the road construction is having on our existing businesses and residents. So right now, we're looking at doing a three-year contract with Western Michigan University's group. We're, we're hiring professors and the grad students to help us set up a baseline of information so that we understand what the impacts are. So for the next three years, as things get started, the students who are studying this will be out at businesses quarterly, helping us understand, like, are these detours working? Are the events that we're planning working? Is the marketing that we're using working? Do we need to change or shift based on what's going on? We're really trying to make sure that we have our pulse on what our small businesses and employers are feeling while we're doing this construction. We feel like that work is very critical, as we're going to be under construction for the next 10 years. So we want to be sure that we have good information to gather, and that we are consistently gathering it so that we can understand the impacts when it's over as well. Did we make improvements? What happened with the streets? Did we gain more residents? Did we gain more businesses? Did businesses get to expand? So this is a study that really will be going on for the next 10 years, and Western Michigan University and their brilliant students are really helping us set that up.
Thank you, Ms. Kick. Any thicker questions for city staff at this time, commissioners? All right, thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So commissioners, the requested motion is approval of an agreement with Western Michigan University to conduct a multi-year study of the economic vitality of downtown Kalamazoo for the amount of $115,000. Is there a motion?
Moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Decker.
Support.
Supported by Vice Mayor Hess. Any further discussion, commissioners, on this item? All right, seeing none, Clerk Boiling, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, the agreement is approved. Manager Jurisma?
For my city managers' report this evening, I just want to highlight our 301 call center, and we started that, well, going on five years ago. So glad to report that the first, it's the first time that we have it fully staffed since it began, and we are transitioning to software, customer relations, software, Salesforce, so that's being undertaken. And so far this year, we've received 27,971 cases. So a case when someone calls in is generated. So it's certainly getting used, and we encourage everyone to just make the one call to City Hall. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Manager Jurisma. Next on our agenda is Commissioner comments. So just a reminder, as has become our habit, it seems, we do have a closed session this evening, which of course we will have to make a motion to go into closed session. We will not be coming back into open session to take any action, as we would need to do if we were to take action, but we will be making a motion to do that. So prior to leaving for closed sessions, the opportunity for Commissioner comments, Commissioner comments? Commissioner Decker? No? Commissioner Hoffman?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, very quickly, I, I shared in our last commission meeting that my water bill had increased exponentially. And I just want to say, I want to give a shout out to Joe from the Water Department. He came to my home. Not only was he professional, he was very personable. I, Joe is invited to my cookout. So he, he was, he was that guy. And so Jim, like, you got a winner right there. And I told him, I'm gonna shout you out. And so here we are, Joe, I'm expecting you to be at the cookout this summer.
None of us are invited, by the way, so-
Look, 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 I'm for the people. I'm not for the, I'm for the people. But, and, and what he said was that there were no leaks detected in my home. There were no leaks detected in my home. So yes, there, there are things that we can do, and, and further investigation needs to happen, but he is definitely, he got a bratwurst and a baby back rib on, on the house.
I don't know if we can beat that for Commissioner comments. Other Commissioner comments? Commissioner Wilson?
I just wanted to quickly highlight KP Cinemas, located on the corner of Porters Road and East South Street. I had no idea that they were there. Full, full credit to Commissioner Pradel, who put me on, per se, but part of the reason that I didn't know that they were there was because of its history. And for those that are unfamiliar with it, they opened up back in November 2023, which was taking over from AMC, who was previously located there, who had closed on November 2020, who had taken over for the previous owner, Alamo Drafthouse, in 20, well, which was closed down in 2017, which again, who had taken over for The Rave, which had closed back in November of 2012. Now, if you're like me and you enjoy your, your movies and your downtown experience, we need you to support that, so that this history of closures doesn't happen again. And just as a reminder, this opening in November was a soft opening. They plan on doing a lot more, but again, that's contingent on our support, so. Oh, very comfy seats and-
First nine minutes, free parking.
First nine minutes, free parking. And full disclosure, to speak about the comfort level of those seats, I made it about 30 minutes into the movie, and then my wife just kept, get up, get up, you always do this. So very comfortable seats, get your rest before you go. Thank you.
It's nice to know someone else does that. Thank you for sharing. Further Commissioner comments?
I'll go.
Okay, Vice Mayor Hess?
Just a few things. Mayor often says all the cool things that we get to attend.
Are you going to talk about the Jordan people? Talk about people from Jordan?
Okay. First of all, I was able to attend an annual meeting of Metro Transit, and, you know, as, as we know, they've gone from being a part of the city to being their own entity. They have, they were just celebrating, and we did a ribbon, ribbon cutting for MetroLink, which opened April 15th, to their cadre of modes of public transportation. In 2023 alone, Metro Transit provided 1,674,983 rides on the, on their fleet of buses, and several of which are, are hybrid and diesel. And then they also provided 124,000 rides via Metro Connect. And so this MetroLink is just going to be another piece of the puzzle that helps people have mobility around the county of Kalamazoo. So I applaud and shout out to Metro Transit for the work they do on behalf of all the people in Kalamazoo. Last Friday, Mayor and I were pleased to be able to sit in a meeting with the contingent from Global Ties, the delegation from Jordan, a group of young people that have come here to experience life in the United States via Kalamazoo. And we had a lively conversation, they were very curious about what goes on in government here in, in the United States, and specifically Kalamazoo. But Jody Michaels, kudos to you, Jody, for, for bringing these groups, these international groups to our city, to experience who we are. And they then tell us who we are, and they hold up a mirror to us, and they loved, they still love Kalamazoo. We had two of the, the folks from Jordan here at our meeting here tonight, they've, they've gone by now. But it was really a pleasure to meet with them, and they, all the delegations that Jody brings to Kalamazoo love Kalamazoo. And she said, then when they go back and they all meet, they go to a few different cities in the United States, when they all go back and they all meet together in, in DC before, before they go, Kalamazoo's their favorite place. They love Kalamazoo. So I would love for us to love Kalamazoo like people that are coming to visit us love it as well. And, and thanks, it, it just tells me the strength of our community, and it tells me the welcoming nature of our people. So thank you so much, Kalamazoo, for making our, our visitors from Jordan feel so welcome. And lastly, we talked here about the, the item that we pulled from the consent agenda. That tells me that we truly are this, we truly are this education city, and that I'll keep talking about it, but using the city as a way to engage with our institutions of higher learning. So partnering with Western Michigan, with the students and professors on this, is, is necessary to do this work so that we have the data. So thank you so much, and off to you, Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Hess, thank you. Christopher Pradel?
I just have one pretty short thing tonight. For those of you who don't know, our very own Vice Mayor later this week is being honored as one of 2024 Women of Achievement. If you do not realize, that is a truly tremendous honor for an individual in our community. And, you know, I think a lot of times when people think about what makes a leader, they think about all the things that they've accomplished in their life, which you have. But I think one of the things that we'd all agree with, with you, Vice Mayor, is that I think you are measured more by the people that you inspire to do great things in their life. For those people who don't know, her grandkids call her coachee. And I think that ripples out from just not only her grandkids, but city staff, and us as colleagues, and people in the community. Wherever you find Vice Mayor Hess, you always find somebody who's trying to help and roll up their sleeves to try to help the community and help individuals solve problems, and find supports, and feel coached. So we all have a little gift for you. We have a nice little card there, and then-
It was, oh!
Flowers from us on the commission, just so you know that we're rooting for you and are honored to have the opportunity to work with you and be a colleague with you on this 55th commission, so.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much. It's humbling, yet I appreciate your words, Commissioner, because I do try to inspire this community to be its best self. So thank you so much for this beautiful gift. Thank you. Thanks to all of you, I'm honored to serve with you.
You smile.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Well, commissioners, finally, we are ready to go into closed session. So in order to do that, we need a motion to go to closed session. Is there anyone who's willing to do that this evening?
So moved.
Motion made by Commissioner Wilson, supported by Commissioner Decker. So once again, we are going to a closed session to discuss pending litigation and an attorney-client privilege to communication. We will not be coming back from our closed session. We now have a motion, and the support of that motion. Clerk Boiling, will you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooney?
Yes.
Commissioner Decker?
Yes.
Commissioner Hoffman?
Yes.
Commissioner Pradel?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, the motion is approved. I love you, Kalamazoo, we are adjourned.